Microphone.
I don't think we know. We haven't heard from them.
I've heard from them, but we have not been called.
Yep.
It's 6:30, so we'll call the May 19, 2022 meeting of the Brandon Planning and Zoning Commission to order.
Microphone.
We'll call the meeting of the May 19, 2022 Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Have a roll call, please.
Brian, Tom.
Here.
Brooks.
Here.
Chuck.
Present.
Rob.
Here.
Alyssa.
Here.
Tim.
So we have a quorum, thank you. And the consent calendar, have a motion to approve that, please?
Motion to approve.
We need to approve the agenda first.
Do you have a motion to approve the agenda, please? We need to take off item number 10. The person who requested we put that on there could not be here tonight and request that we take it off until they could be here. So we take off number 10 for a later date.
Move to approve.
A second?
A second.
A motion and second to approve the agenda, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And now we'll go to the consent calendar.
I move that we accept the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion, second, to approve the consent calendar, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Approval of the minutes for the regular meeting, our, the April 21 meeting is our most recent meeting.
I, I already know what I didn't have any problems with, so I move that we accept it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the April 21 meeting, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Now is the time in our meeting when we can hear public comments. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to the commission? Seeing no one, go to the next business. Number seven, election of the vice chairperson. Once a year, we need to elect somebody. The, the chairperson is somebody who is appoint, is a Brennan City Council member who is appointed by the mayor with the council's approval, no, with the council's approval or no?
Yes.
Yes. And, but we have to have a, we have to select our own vice chairperson here on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Do I hear any nominations?
I would nominate Alyssa.
I would second that nomination.
It's been seconded, has moved and seconded to reappoint Alyssa Tealy as the vice chairperson. Another discussion? Okay, thanks. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And now we are on number eight, we have a rezoning application for track three of the Hernie Lean Edition. And is there someone here to speak to that? Yes, would you please come up to the podium, say your name and address, press a little button when the red light behind the, behind the foam there comes on, then is it, yeah, now you're good. Go.
My name is Lanny Orger. My address is 2700 West Third Street, Suite 3, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. I'm here representing Precision Capital SD, which is essentially Housit Speedway. I'm the owner of Housit Speedway. And requesting a rezone of the Lean Hernie Track 3, which is the parcel that was just recently platted, it was in your consent calendar. And it's directly adjacent to the racetrack, to the, justly on the north side of the racetrack. The purpose for the rezone is right now it's, I'll probably get this wrong in how identified, it's ag, recreation, something to that nature, is that right? So we're looking to rezone it to general business. The intent is to construct an office building and possibly a race shop. I know this information that I shared with Paul when I did the application showed the office and race shop all together. We're having some reconsideration in regards to the race shop portion of it, simply because of the, some of the site features, the way the site drops off and things to that nature. We're thinking that maybe just using a parcel that's closest to the highway for an office building may be more appropriate in finding a different location for the race shop in the future.
Now, piece of land is inside the city limits?
The city limits runs right between the racetrack and that parcel.
But it's on the south side of the road, right? Yeah?
It is on the east side of Highway 11.
Okay, yeah.
And on the, and on the north side of the racetrack.
It's next to, next to the.
Yeah, yeah. But it's on the same side of the street as Housit's is.
It is on the same side of the street as Housit's. It essentially overlooks the racetrack and the new campground that was constructed last year.
Oh. Oh, okay, okay, I got, I got it. Is there any, does anybody on the commission have questions or comments, discussion?
Right now, agricultural, if there's no water going there or sewer or anything like that?
There's a, a water main that runs right on the south property line, six inch water main that runs through there. That's what we'll anticipate tying into for water. And there is no sewer serving it, and I understand that the ordinance doesn't, does not allow septic systems, so we're intending to put a holding tank in for the sewer system. My understanding is it's, for the city to get sewer out there, it's a long ways away.
Yeah, so you're considering a large holding tank?
Correct, a large holding tank.
With no field, septic drainage?
Correct, there will be no drainage field, that, that would be a septic system, we're just, yep. Purple Petunia shows up and cleans it out, you know, as needed.
And that, in that drawing, I see an apartment in there, a three bedroom apartment, that's for your team?
That's correct. They have a, they have a traveling race team. The shop would be for that race team when they're in town. That's very, very rarely in the summer, occasionally, and then of course, when they have big races out in Housit, they'll be there. But then, in the winter, they finish up their races in November, they don't start again until early February, and they typically are at the race shop, building new race cars preparing for the next race season. So that would just be a small lodging facility for those team members that are there during that time. It's nothing that's rented out to anybody else other than the race teams, not rented, it's just provided. And again, at this time, it's, it's looking like we probably won't do the shop portion with this project. Never say never, but as of right now, we're looking at just doing the office building. Is there, what do you, I, I'm fine with it myself, going through.
Yep, I would move to approve.
Yeah.
I'll second.
We have a motion and second to, to approve the, I want to say the right words.
It'd be a recommendation to city council.
Oh, okay. I'm trying to get back up to my, do it from here. It's the rezoning, okay. I have a, a motion and a second to recommend a due pass to the city council for the rezoning of Track 3 Hernie Lean Edition. Is there any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
You bet. And now, we have, in new business, number nine, public hearing on fence regulations. Is this? Yeah.
We're up and running.
Okay, Patrick, you'll fill us in on some.
So we talked about this, what kind of feels like months ago. This is to basically allow a fence to be built around and incorporate a natural feature into it. Everything natural is limited in height if you bring it on there, except for a tree, those would go tolling the fence, but it allows a, a fence to include some natural feature. And we talked about this probably a month or two ago.
Couple times already.
And there's a bit of discussion later, this, you'll see this is again, a discussion item towards the end of the packet, that is because talking to Melissa back and forth, we want to have the fence definition kind of match up with the materials in the section. So that's what, but that's a separate thing to be discussed later, this is just dealing with the natural feature part.
So, so the language you have recommending here is all on page 35 in our packets, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Do I have, anybody have any questions or comments or discussion?
If it incorporates a living thing like a tree or bush or whatever.
Yep.
And that dies for whatever reason, are they required to replace it?
Need your microphone. So, a tree, and any natural feature brought or grown on the lot after this would become effective, it has to meet the fence requirement except for a tree. So if they built a hedge as part of the fence, the hedge could not exceed the normal fence height. So that, that's not a way to skirt around the fence rule, is by having a 10 foot tall hedge.
No, I'm saying if the, the hedge gets blight or whatever and dies and.
Yep.
So you don't have a six foot hedge anymore, you got stubble.
Yeah.
Yep.
What do they, are they required to replace it to make it a fence? Or do they lose the ability to have a fence then?
They would have to bring, the, the regrown hedge would have to meet the requirement, so they could put it back. It may be less than what it was potentially, depending on what the regulations say.
Yeah, time will.
Yeah.
Yep.
But they are required to maintain it.
People aren't. It depends on what the hedge is being used for.
Yeah.
Is what, is it a hedge or is it a hedge being used as a fence? It gets kind of a staff question there, it's what are you using it for?
Okay.
Just one way or the other, the materials used in the fence have to meet the requirements, except for the exception for a tree, which grows taller, so if something changes, something may, yeah, but that would be, could be different remedies for that if it came to pass, right?
So am I, it says except for trees, any natural incorporated into the fence after the effective ordinance, does that mean we're allowing it after as well? Like if a person wants to put a rock in for a fence, like into the fence, we're allowing it still?
They could, say nothing exists there now and they want to bring a rock and incorporate it in.
Yeah.
Yes, so long as it meets the fence requirement. If it's pre-existing, it, it is what it is.
But they can still do it, is what I'm saying, is what we're saying, for like with a rock?
Yes, they could bring in a rock, they could bring in whatever they think could be a useful natural feature to incorporate into a fence. And this does exist throughout town, we're just trying to bring the zoning up to what's happening.
Any other discussion? I'd entertain a motion.
Are you motioning to approve or to?
Right, to approve, there's still gotta go to city council, it's an ordinance, so go to city council first or second, or you have an adoption period, it's gonna be effective until.
It's like the last motion, it's a either recommend or not recommend adoption to the council.
I'll make a motion to recommend it.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to recommend to the city council to approve this change in ordinance on fencing materials. All in favor, please signify, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, next, let's see. The skip in 10, so now we're on to 11. No, I got it, all right. Discussion on the definition of family.
So this is kind of the, the third discussion we've had on, on group homes. We, we went back and forth quite a bit last time, and this kind of, the new draft beginning on page 40 reflects the conversation from last time. It was brought up rather than have a cap number as part of the definition, it is based on, it's in the, the box of the zoning district with an R1 being a cap of eight, and then I will, I left it open for you all to decide what you think is a good cap for R2 and R3. Brian felt strongly that we make the cap reflective of the district, rather than just have a hard cap everywhere. There was some discussion whether group homes would be allowed in the NRC district. The issue there is, the NRC district, I, I, I get the notion that you want to limit development in NRC based on what it is. Currently, the zoning ordinance does have permitted and conditional uses for things in the NRC district. They could get, they could want, a, a home is a permitted use in the NRC district, so if someone came and had NRC land and got a building permit for a home, they could build it. With, with group homes, the, the understanding there is you, you can't treat the members of a group home worse than you would a group of unrelated people living together. And currently, a single family by definition can include up to three unrelated persons, so you can't necessarily not have a group home in NRC. You, you'd, you'd have to either treat it better or at least the same as you would the housing for unrelated people. So should you, we talked about some, what do we want the NRC purpose to be? If it is to limit development, we'd need to, I don't, maybe a starting point would be, would you want any kind of development in NRC to be conditional use across the board? Is that too far? Do we need to relook at NRC? But this discussion's on group home, so the big difference is, as we mentioned, was where do you want the caps in each district? Does the definition look good? It's, that's, that's kind of where we are, so we are open to your thoughts. And whether they would ever be larger than eight, I don't know. It's, the state rule for Medicaid funding is eight, so you could potentially have an entirely private operation that would want to go larger, whether that is a practical reality or not, I do not know. But, yeah, that was kind of Brian's thought, if, if some, someone found it, they wanted to have a 36 bedroom group home in R3, would that necessarily be the end of the world? Probably not, but.
So with that in thought, with that in mind, do we really want to set a number in there?
That was his suggestion, and that's what's on here, based on that, you can set, you, the market will ultimately set the number if you don't put one in, just based on either the Medicaid rule or just what is feasible. No one's going to build an 100 room facility if there isn't a market demand for it, conception.
It becomes more of an institution than a group home.
Arguably, a certain point, potentially.
I understand the eight because of the state obligation, but I wouldn't want to go any less than eight. You know, times change, maybe 20 years ago, six would have been all the people going to take care of, but.
Yep.
Eight seems to be the limit right now.
Yep.
But it could change, but of course, we could change this too.
Yep, so I guess it all depends on, that was kind of Brian's take on it, but Brian, the board member, not Brian, the administrator, just to clarify. So it's, I guess it's all up to you whether you all feel the same way, if you feel just an a cap everywhere, whatever you, you think we can discuss and, and hash through. And I imagine, once it gets there, the city council will want to weigh in as well, just because it is an important thing to discuss.
I see here on page 40 in our packet, for the R1 district, you're, you have the number eight in there, but for R2, you have no, no number, so that's something we need to come up with tonight of what we want to do with that.
Correct.
And then for. Yeah, R3, we need to come up with a number for that.
Patrick, today, you said the state said eight?
The state standard is eight if you want to receive Medicaid funding to.
They, they don't have any, different language for R2, R3?
They do not, this, as far as I know, the state has not gone into zoning for group homes. Most zoning things are left at the local level. I believe that's correct, okay.
Is anyone, if we go eight, 16, 32, I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there, I don't know.
It looks like we're just throwing out numbers.
Yeah.
In most cases, my guess is you're probably going to be dealing with the eight Medicaid funded cap, but there is that room for some private person found that 12 is the number I need to make this a viable project, entirely privately funded, but I'm, I'm not sure what the practical reality of that happening is or not, but we're just trying to, you know, all that being said, all this can be amended should something come along as well.
I mean, if we're plucking out numbers, I'd be fine plugging in 12 for an R2 and maybe no number for the R3. And just see what happens.
Unlimited?
Yeah.
Would these have to have a conditional use permit?
These do not, just because if you were to treat a group of unrelated people living in a single family house as a permitted use, you kind of have to treat the group home the same.
And that would be in any of the R districts?
Yep.
One, two, or three, yeah.
I kind of like, I like the 12 better than doubling it for the R1 to R2, so I, I
How do you feel for R3?
I don't know, I feel like any number I would say is kind of arbitrary, because I don't know what to put on it, so.
And accompanying this is that reasonable accommodation ordinance we discussed, that federal law requires you to make reasonable accommodations to allow disabled people to access housing. So should it become the case where a private developer comes in wanting to do one, and it takes 13 to make it viable and the cap is 12, chances are the cap would have to bend to that under federal law. So it's a little bit murky, but we're doing the best we can.
Well, I kind of agree with the, the 12. If the people that are running these homes, you, you brought up the viable situation, eight maybe is enough to make it viable, but if they can get four people to come in that somehow are paying for their own, why, why would you restrict them? You have the eight that are paid for by the government, and the other four that's possible could be, you know, added on if they could find them.
And I'm not sure how Medicaid would treat a, a half and half situation, I, I don't know.
Maybe private insurance.
Yep, would they allow the extra four if it's not, is the cap on the eight entirely Medicaid funded, or is it, if you receive any, I'm not sure, so.
Or military people that are handicapped or.
Yep.
They wouldn't be paid by Medicare necessarily, they'd be paid by the government, veterans. I'm just trying to leave it open.
Yep.
I know we discussed a bigger number, but I'm just kind of feeling like if we do eight, 12, 16, to me is, like I said, not, not knowing if there's a time in the future when someone might, so, but it's, it's a progression in it.
You'd rather have a progression? You'd rather see that?
I think it makes some sense to have some progression based on what those residential zonings are for, but I thought the eight to 16 from R1 to R2 was too much for me, so eight to 12, I feel better about between those two.
I could live with that, eight, 12, and 16, if we need to change it in the future, we can always change it.
And it is important to probably highlight the definition of what a handicap or disability is on page 41. There are, they, it's a, it's a very specific thing. It's a, according to this definition, a physical developmental, intellectual, or mental impairment that substantially limits one or more major life activities, a record of having such impairment or being regarded as having such an impairment. It does not include a person currently engaged in the illegal use of controlled substances, a person convicted by a court of illegal manufacture or distribution of controlled substances, even if that person does have a handicap otherwise, or any person that would constitute a direct threat to health and safety of individuals or property, or that can be reduced by accommodation. So it is related to disabilities and not necessarily other types of group housing. This is a very particular definition of group housing. It would not be nursing homes or other frat houses or other places where groups live together.
Could, somebody from the American, would you, would you speak to that? The numbers?
Malley Klute, 604 North Oak Ridge Road, Managing Director at Volunteers of America Dakotas. As it relates to the numbers that you're discussing, the only one that I can really provide feedback on is that of a R1 group home, as to eight individuals living together in a single family home. That's the requirement that I'm familiar with under the federal Home and Community Based Settings Rule and our state certification for supporting people with disabilities, and that cap, as I've represented before, is eight.
Thank you.
The other point of potential discussion is, is NRC, there was a little bit of discussion how much development we wanted to do in NRC. Again, if you allow unrelated people to live in a single-family dwelling, then you kind of have to allow a group home as well. So any kind of changes to an NRC to limit development might, would probably be better addressed going at NRC as a district from kind of a policy standpoint rather than a particular use. Do you want to allow development or not and start from there? Is any development going to be a conditional use? I, I don't know, that, that might be a further discussion, but Brian seemed to feel strongly about limiting development and, and, and I agree. It depends on what you want your NRC to, to be. If it's land that's going to be transitioned into development, then you probably want to control it as the eventual development, not necessarily what it is now, so. But that, that does exist, so I, if they are, if you will have single-family dwellings in NRC and it is currently a permitted use, you can't really stop a group home from being there. Just because unrelated people have to be, unrelated people live there, so a group home is, as well.
And we now allow, in the NRC, somebody could build a home? Or do we, do we allow only pre-existing homes?
I, I believe it's, it's a permitted use. Your permitted uses in NRC are ag, single-family detached dwelling, which would be a standard single-family home, golf course, public park, neighborhood utility, and cemetery. Conditional use is currently wireless telecommunications facility on existing structure, municipally-owned wastewater treatment, electrical substation, or a public utility facility. So you do allow single-family detached dwellings.
So maybe that would be a way to approach it, would be to talk about whether we want new construction of, of dwelling, you know, places for people to live. Because all the other uses that you listed there are, you know, public benefit, not private benefit, uses.
Except for the ag and the, the house.
Yeah, well, yeah.
And that kind of comes into the, the timeline for developing the property. If you bring in NRC land and there's a house, so as a permitted use, say we got another weather event and now there is no house, they would be allowed to rebuild as a permitted use. If it was a conditional use, they would need a conditional use permit to rebuild because the structure would be presumably more than 50% value destroyed. So that's one thing. It could potentially limit people's ability to rebuild, but I imagine potentially the board would be more sympathetic to them in that situation.
And the NRC locations are around the outskirts of town, they're not.
I think so.
Not at all, but Long Sioux, there's some NRC lots.
Sure, sure. But as the town grows, yeah. If, if a piece of land is all set up as agricultural living and then the city grows out that way, you have all, you have the infrastructure and everything you have to change.
We're, we're starting a little bit off topic. Maybe from NRC, it's trying to, you know, find NRC's purpose. Is it maybe taking NRC and making one district into two? You have a ag district until it can be transitioned and you have kind of a floodways or floodplain district. That's just the land where no one would build anyway, but it has to be zoned something. But that's a conversation for another day. We're on the.
This is, yeah.
The group home.
So our discussion tonight, we kind of, we need to plug in numbers in the R2 district and the R3 district or decide what to do with the, with them.
Tentatively based on what I'm hearing, are you all okay with Section 1 being the group home in the NRC? I imagine we would make that rule similar to the R1 rule, but that's all up to you as well. Seeing that single-family dwellings are allowed there currently, whether we change that in the future.
I think that's a good starting point, yeah.
We talked about, so R2, 12, R3, 16, is that?
Good. And this is just an item for discussion, so we don't need any votes on it.
Correct. So we'll write it back up and we can talk about it again, or we can schedule it for a public hearing, whatever you all
Okay.
feel is best.
All right, thanks. Okay, then we'll move on to number 12, discussion on fences. And we already kind of touched on this.
Correct. What this one has, that what we just heard a public hearing on, the difference is the definition of fence incorporates the materials that are listed in, in the fences section. So Melissa felt this was a necessary addition just to make sure the two sections are read consistently, that the definition isn't more broad than the language in the section. So you can't have someone point to the definition and be like, I'm going with that and not the fences section.
Yeah. And so what, what we're talking here is mostly natural features, like hedges, living things, hedges. Well, rock, yeah, is not living, but, or tree, large rock, hedge or tree. So as you commissioners look at this, it look okay to you? It's pretty much the same language as we read before. Artificially constructed.
Yep. Yep. And the change here is the definition of fence includes the fence materials. This shall include ornamental iron, vinyl, masonry stone, pressure-treated wood or wood having a natural resistance to decay and chain link. That's from 15146G. It just puts that language in there. And that allows other materials as well by conditional use. So it, it's making both them consistent with each other. So it's not really changing a whole lot, but it's connecting the pieces.
So this is section L and 15146 goes up to K right now. So this is just.
Yep, so.
To add it on as is.
Yes, that's, the numbering on what we discussed at the conditional use permit here on 35 has the letter being I, but that would be letter L based on the order. It, it ended up being a lowercase L instead of an uppercase L, but that, that's clarified, that is section L.
So are we good on that?
Yep.
Yep, good. Then we can move on to number 13, which is discussion on industrial contractor duplexes.
So we allow quite a bit of kind of things to share lot lines. But for some reason, in the industrial area, we didn't allow contractor shops kind of to be in a row with a shared common wall. This is kind of doing the, the home kind of duplex model where the wall is, is shared, the townhouse model, but applying it to industrial structures, both if they want to have the whole, their whole lot up to the property lines or if they want to be kind of a condo situation where they own the commonly-owned space. The difference, other than the setback being zero, is with the commonly-owned space, they can set their parking anywhere in that commonly-owned space. If they all want to, rather than have parking spaces in front of each, they can put it in one singular location should they choose to do so. And whether that makes sense or not, I am open to your comments. This is just trying to provide them. That would probably make it a little bit difficult then if they were to subdivide and sell based on how they set that up. But this is just kind of trying to do the same thing to give them some options, rather than each having to have a building with setbacks from each other.
They'd still have to have a number of parking spaces equal to what each would need to have separately.
Correct. But if they have the commonly-owned space, they are allowed to take the combined total of all of them and put them in one spot. Say they want to do some kind of landscaping or other arrangement with the rest of the commonly-owned space. If that makes sense. Chuck looks like he has some comments.
The only comment I was gonna make is I, I like doing this because we're seeing more of a need for this out in our industrial park. I mean, we're getting more interest in doing that.
And this idea did come from one of the owners of a property out in the development park, trying to maximize the use of the land.
So I think this is a good thing to do, Patrick.
Are we good?
Yep.
Good, okay. And then the last thing on our agenda are the building, building permits for April. Quite a few of them. Anybody have any comments or?
Number 60, 10 million, 900,000 per grading. That sounds awful expensive.
Well, that's, that's the, the big development.
That's.
Heading, heading west out of town, but people who hates development, the large.
Yeah. The apartments out by the bluffs, out by the funeral home. Yeah.
On Chester?
Yeah.
It's kind of all on Chester.
Yeah.
One on the, the west side.
Yeah, one on Rice Street, yeah. Yeah. That's a $10 million, 900,000 project, it says here. Um, let's see. 17 houses to date, 17 new homes to date. As of April 30th compared to 24 this time last year.
We've had some more coming in May.
Yep. Yep. Okay, well, I guess I'd entertain a motion, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, we're adjourned. It's 7:14 PM. Thank you.